Welcome to the Morganton City Council meeting, March 7th, 2016. I'm going to ask Councilman Forrest Fleming if you'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please rise.
Join me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and please be seated.
I'd like for an invocation to be given by Reverend Daniel Gutiérrez from the New Life Church of God.
Good evening, thank you for inviting me. Let's go ahead and pray. Father God, we thank you for the opportunity to be your children, and thank you for the opportunity to gather in this moment, God, to discuss the business of the city. We ask you that you give an omen and understanding to every member of this community and every member of this board, so they can take the decisions, God, that are pleasing to you and that are necessary to our community. We ask you that you bless us and be with us in every moment and opportunity that we ask for your presence. We ask you all of this in Christ's sake. Amen.
Thank you, Daniel. We start our meeting with the retiree resolution. Oh, introduction, City Council. Thank you, City Attorney. On my far right, Councilman Forrest Fleming; to his left, Louis Vena, our City Attorney; I'm Ronnie Thompson, the Mayor; on my left, Sally Sandy, our City Manager; to her left, Sidney Simmons, Councilman; John Cantrell, Councilman; and Recording Secretary Kelly Russell; and interpreting for our deaf community is Becky Brinkley. Okay, we'll start off with the retiree resolution for Billy Bradshaw. Sally, would you bring us some history on Billy? I'll read the resolution if you'll say a few words about Major Bradshaw.
I'd be honored, because he is one of my very favorite people. Billy is a fine man, and I believe I said that at his retirement reception. And honestly, over the years, and I have had the pleasure, having been in finance and the manager's office, to work a lot with Billy over the years on budgets and other things. He is as true a person as you will ever find. He does everything with the right attitude, and he has been a pleasure to work with and a real tribute to our community. Our citizens are fortunate, and we are better off for you having served in our community.
Thank you. I'd like to read the resolution. Whereas Billy R. Bradshaw was employed by the City of Morganton as Public Safety Officer Trainee in the Public Safety Department on January 9th, 1989, completed field training and was promoted to Public Safety Officer on May 1st, 1989, promoted to Field Training Officer on January 10th, 1992, promoted to Sergeant on July 2nd, 1994, promoted to Captain on March 27th, 2000, promoted to Inter-Mayor/Major on February 28th, 2005, transferred to Major of Field Operations on April 12th, 2008, transferred to Major of Support Services on January 1st, 2011. And whereas Billy R. Bradshaw has faithfully served the City of Morganton in the Public Safety Department and has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 28 years and 10 months, and whereas Billy R. Bradshaw retired from the City of Morganton as Major of Support Services in the Public Safety Department on March 1st, 2016, and whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Billy R. Bradshaw and express their appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the Mayor present this resolution to Billy R. Bradshaw adopted this 7th day of March, 2016. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor; Sally Sandy, City Clerk. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
So move.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes unanimously. We have another motion to declare surplus a pistol. The motion reads to declare a surplus, a Glock Model 23 Gen IV semi-automatic pistol, serial number XPH028, and a Paul Conley brand American Classic, serial number LH0073672, fire services helmet, be sold and presented to retired Major Bradshaw. Do I have a motion to accept this action?
So move.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes unanimously. I'd like to call Billy Bradshaw to the front and ask Councilman Forrest to present the checks, and I think Forrest, you'd like to make a statement?
He's going to pay.
You're going to pay the dollar for this service pistol?
Yeah, save the city manager a buck.
He saved me a dollar, but I would have paid it.
Forrest, if you'll present the checks and the resolution, please. I'd like for Chief Cracker to come up with Billy, please. Councilman Fleming, would you like to say a few words?
I'm kind of going to, I was going to say, I'm going to kind of take advantage of the situation here.
Go ahead.
And say a word or two, since I happen to have known Major Bradshaw for over 35 years, and I told him earlier that I was going to use the 35 years as opposed to any other number, because I didn't want to go beyond that, because if nothing else, I didn't want to embarrass myself. Major Bradshaw, as everyone probably knows, he certainly is a man of faith. He has several different roles in the church that he attends. He has a great pastor, who has numerous times talked and gave him plenty of accolades, and knowing that, like Sally said, he is a good man and has plenty of people in his church to support that. Major Bradshaw is a very strong family man. He does love his family, and maybe more recently, in the last several years, he certainly does love those grandchildren, and I don't blame him a bit. Major Bradshaw is a man of integrity. He is well-respected by those individuals with whom he has worked for the past several He certainly is an honorable man. There's no question about that. He has numerous friends that would certainly attest to that, along with all those individuals with whom he has worked for the past nearly 30 years. I understand, too, from some of his friends that I've had the opportunity to talk with, that he's kind of a serious hunter and fisher, too, fisherman, so. Major Bradshaw, it certainly is my honor and pleasure to present to you this resolution, honoring you and your service to the City of Morganton. Thank you so much for all you have done, and also got a couple of checks here. There's two of them, maybe one for me and one for you. You get both of them. Thank you so much for your service. We appreciate you greatly.
Chief Cracker, would you say a few words, please?
Yes, sir. I just, I've known Billy ever since I became an officer at the City of Morganton, and everything that Councilman said and the City Manager said is certainly accurate of who he is as a person. He has been a friend of mine for over 20 years. He is a mentor, he is a leader. He is a leader not only in the Morganton Department of Public Safety, but in his community, within his church, within his family, and there's not a finer person that I know, and I'm proud to call him my friend. And on behalf of the City of Morganton and Morganton Department of Public Safety, I'll present you with your service weapon, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you for everything.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, City Manager, all City staff, I'd like to say thank you. From the bottom of my heart, I was given the opportunity to serve citizens of Morganton. It's a hard thing to walk away, but obviously, the city's in good hands, and I appreciate all, everything the department's done, all the people at the department that have supported me over the years, and I appreciate it very deeply. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now I would add that you have a pretty good wife over there working with you, too, and our community's fortunate to have her as well.
Billy, thanks for all you've done for citizens in this city. Thank you so much. We have several service pins to present. Randy Chester, I believe Electric Department, is he here? Yes, Randy, if you'll go to the podium. I think John, Councilman Cantrell, have you already presented his pin?
I've already presented it, had the picture taken, and Randy can't wait to get up in front of the whole group.
If you want to say a word, you can. If not, he's shaking his head. Thank you for your 25 years of service. And Ronnie Gibbs, is Ronnie here?
Not here.
Nope, not here. He'll get that, he'll get his service pin a little bit later. Under public advocacy, we have, at comma, we have the Vanities Committee on March the 18th at 7:30. We have the Community House to host the 22nd Annual ACC Chili Cook-Off Friday, March the 11th, beginning at 11 o'clock and going to 1 o'clock. I would remind the citizens of Morganton and Burke County that the Connect NC Bond referendum is presently being voted on. Please, please remember to vote hopefully for the referendum, because it means $91 million coming to Burke County and Morganton. It's real critical that you vote, and we get this bond resolution passed. The City Council Workshop will be held March 15th, beginning at 8:30 in the council chambers. I'm going to ask City Manager Sally Sandy to talk about an issue that's come to my attention several, several times, and that's the corner of Avery Avenue and Buchell Street, where we've had some renovations going on, and Sally, would you please sort of explain the transition into that, into that intersection, please?
I'd be glad to, and the good news is, is that since Mark Young, the city engineer, is not here, my talk will be shorter than his and not quite as technical. So, this is my attempt at traffic engineering. So we have a new island that is in that intersection, and it's actually in Avery Avenue. And that is, as you well know, a state street, and the state approved that plan, and that is part of the beautification and the changing of that intersection to make it more pedestrian-friendly. And I know that it seems weird that you're driving up there and you're coming up to this island, but the reality is, is that one of the problems is, that was always only one lane. Through that intersection was one lane, but it was a very wide lane, and so people treated it as two lanes of traffic, which caused a lot of issues. So the state approved putting in the island to calm and slow that traffic down through that intersection, as was originally planned. So you have one lane, and you don't hit two lanes until you get past the traffic island. And stay tuned, because I know we told you this, and you're wondering if it's going to happen, but the DOT is going to install a stoplight. We are going to have a real stoplight at that intersection, which will be great. So watch out for the island, but it is there because it was always only meant to be one lane. How's that?
That's great. Thank you so much. Another announcement I'd like to make is that North Carolina's annual statewide tornado drill for 2016 will take place on Wednesday, March the 9th, at 9:30 Eastern Standard Time. Every school, business, workplace, and family across the state is strongly encouraged to participate in the statewide tornado drill. The drill will be broadcast on the National Weather Radio and Emergency Alert System during the required monthly tests, so that will happen on March the 9th at 9:30. It is just a drill, it's not the real thing, so please be aware of that. Also, I would like to announce that a prescribed burn is planned for Grandfather Ranger District on Tuesday, March the 8th, through Thursday, March the 10th. It'll be a three-day burn at Roses Mountain, north of Morganton, and south of Table Rock, and the object of this burn are fuel reduction and habitat restoration, so that will be a prescribed burn happening on March the 8th. I'd like to also announce that the Human Relations Council is taking applications for the Young Citizen of the Year in Morganton and the Adult Citizen of the Year in Morganton. You must be a city resident of Morganton, and that applications are due to our Human Resources by Friday, March the 18th. I'd like to call on City Manager to announce about a cable workshop. I believe we have, we have a sheet for...
We do. You recall that earlier you commissioned an economic study of Compass Cable, and we hired a consultant to do that, and he is completing his work, and you have before you a schedule, and ask each of you to, you have three opportunities for the meeting, and we'd like for you to check which times you can come, April 6th and April 19th, because we want to have everyone there, and then once we get the date set, we will send out the proper press notices and everything for that. That will happen in this building, probably in council, well, probably, maybe not down here. It'll either be down here or in the upstairs conference room, but that'll be in the notice.
Another announcement is the Red, White, and Bluegrass Festival is set for July 1st through July 4th. The early bird tickets from February the 1st to April the 15th. So this, these applications, you can call the City of Morganton Municipal Auditorium for tickets, and we also have the information at City, at the reception desk in downtown City Hall, if people are interested in Red, White, and Bluegrass Festival. The last thing I'd like for the City Manager to talk about, please, is the outages from windstorm. I've got a report, and it looks like, Sally, that the longest the city was without electricity portion of the city was three hours. Could you give us an update on the outages?
You'll recall that, you know, a little more than a week or so ago, we had a pretty substantial windstorm, and we did have some outages from that. Electric Department did a great job and cleared and got power back on. Three hours was our longest duration. Some other areas around us were without power for more than a day or so, so I feel really good about that response. Obviously, Recreation, Public Works, everybody's involved in that, public safety every time it happens. We'll tell everyone that during that storm, we had 30 trees come down at Catawba Meadows. We are still in the process of cleaning those up, and that doesn't address all that was down on the greenway. So crews have been busy in cleaning that up, and I have declared winter and bad weather over. We are moving to spring, and the groundhog is finally going to get to be right.
Thank you for that weather report.
If I'm wrong, I apologize, but I'm trying to make it happen.
We're going, will it happen? Okay, we're going, will it to happen? Okay, next on the agenda, anything from the North Carolina Municipal Power Agency, number one?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Next on our agenda is consideration of filling District Force Council vacancy. I think our City Attorney, if you've got ballots, would you pass those out?
I do.
We'd like to take a vote and turn those ballots over to our Recording Secretary.
In the same manner as we've done before.
We'll pass them down for you.
Pass those down to Sidney.
If you'll mark your ballot, please. And we'll pass it down.
Whoa, did we get them?
No, I'll take a better name.
Oh, well, you got Sidney's and John got yours and...
I've got it right.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, cross out who you really are.
Yeah.
Or be who you want to be.
Next, yes.
Councilman Simmons, vote for John Henry. John Cantrell, Wendy Cato. Mayor Thompson, John Henry. Councilman Fleming, Wendy Cato.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll continue this discussion at a later date. There was some discussion in the previous meeting concerning, I think Councilman Forrest Fleming made a, came up with an idea about possibly having a special election. I'd like for our City Attorney to give us some feedback on the research you did on that.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe this has already been in the press, but to clarify from the, what was discussed at the last meeting, unfortunately, there is no provision in North Carolina law or under our charter for holding a special election for the purpose of filling a council vacancy. There are some towns in North Carolina that do have such a provision in their charter. We're definitely not one of them, and most towns do not, so therefore, we can't call a special election for that purpose.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Sally?
Tonight, you have eight items included on the consent agenda. The staff considers those to be non-controversial and would ask that they be accepted in one motion, unless somebody would like something removed and discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, we have three sets of minutes, regular meeting from February 1st, and special meeting in closed session from February the 11th, tax releases in the amount of $173.05, a resolution verifying that the Morganton Department of Public Safety is an agency of the City of Morganton, always popular item, and the 2016-2017 participation in the urban archery season, which would require us sending a letter with our intent to participate in that. We have done that for several years. The always exciting annual approval of the scheduled update of minor revisions to specifications for water lines, wastewater lines, and everything water and wastewater, another popular item. Budget amendment for street resurfacing, $261,000, and this is re-appropriating last year's Powell Bill money. You'll recall we did two years' worth of paving in one year, so we need to re-appropriate that money this year. 2017 Mack tandem dump truck, award of contract for that, $126,677.85, that is below budget. And then the consideration of adopting the Western Piedmont Bicycle Plan, which will be considered throughout the entire Unifor area.
Do any members of the City Council wish to take off any of those considerations? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Under new business, we need to consider the, to enter into an audit contract with our new auditor, Sally?
Yes, we are considering a new contract with, for our audit services with Elliott Davis de Cosimo, and we are very fortunate tonight to have Tom McNish with us, who is the government chair and shareholder of the firm, and he will present to you a presentation talking about that engagement and what we can look forward to. While he is coming up, I will also let you know that the first year of that contract is for $36,500, that on March the 22nd, you are aware that the audit team that will be doing the work here will be here, meeting with the staff, and you will have the opportunity to meet with them that day as well.
Tom, welcome. I understand you may have a slide presentation?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. And I'll keep it very brief, and thank you for the time tonight, and we look forward to the opportunity to serve as your, as your audit firm and work with your folks in finance. Also want to take the opportunity to facilitate what's considered to be required communication with y'all as the governing board, and there's a number of ways we can do that, but I thought it might be good, as an introduction, just to cover it in a few short slides, and then, of course, take any questions that y'all, y'all might have. Just kind of as a very brief introduction to Elliott Davis and our firm, next slide. Just a few numbers, so you have kind of an idea of where we are and, you know, our depth, I guess. So we're a firm of about 850 folks. A lot of that, I've been with the firm for, going on 20 years, so I've seen us go from a pretty small firm to, definitely not the biggest, but we've, we've got good depth to be able to cover a lot of technical issues. So wanted to convey that as an importance to where any audit or accounting issue that might come up with, with the number of folks that we have, that I'm able to rely on, it's a good-sized team, and that puts us within the top 30 accounting firms in the country. We're mostly in the, in the southeast, and in North Carolina, we have a office in Charlotte, about 100 folks. Mostly folks from that office will be the engagement team for, for the city's audit, and then I'm actually in the Riley office, where we have about 46 folks there. Next slide. So as I mentioned, some required communications, us as potentially your audit firm with, with y'all as the governing board, we, we do answer to y'all as the governing board, so we always want to have effective two-way communication, and these are just a few examples of both communications that would be coming from us, but then also what we would look to hear from y'all if any of these things were to arise. So any kind of significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in, in your internal control system, we would, we would be required to report that to you if those came about as a result of, of the audit process. Of course, any instances of fraud or non-compliance, major significant non-compliance, if we had disagreements with management that held up the audit process, these are all just examples of things that we certainly would, would not expect to have happened, but if they did, we would be required to come to y'all as the governing board to resolve those issues. By the same token, if there were any decisions on the part of council, usually if it were an instance where you removed a key person in senior management that would possibly affect the audit process, we'd, we'd want to know about that, obviously, so we could adjust our process. Clearly, if you had suspicion of, or detection of fraud, that would be an obvious concern that we'd want to know about. Any concerns about integrity or competence of your senior management team, that would be definitely something that would affect the, the audit process from us. And in any other matters that y'all as a governing board, you know, that would come to light, that you, you felt necessary to reach out to us directly, we just want you to know that as part of the required communications, we, we'd want to facilitate that. Next slide. One important part of the process for us is that we are independent of the city as an organization, as a firm, so we have very distinct policies in place within our firm to make sure that no one on our engagement team, and for that matter, really anybody in our firm, has any significant financial interest, family connection, or that we're providing services that maybe are contingency-based, that would be something that we couldn't do. So we have folks within our quality control department that monitor that very carefully to make sure that we're maintaining that arms-length relationship as your, as your audit firm. So if any circumstances arose to where we felt like our independence was impaired, that would be required communication that we would, we would need to come to y'all and, and resolve that. Again, not, not, that, this is something that we've already vetted in, in becoming familiar with y'all, and so I wouldn't anticipate any issue, but if that were to be the case, we would, we would need to communicate it. So a lot of what, next slide, a lot of what we do is planning and doing our homework before we start the audit, so before we bring our team in, we really, there are a number of items that we want to make sure we have a good understanding of the city's primary objectives and strategies for providing services to, to your constituents, how your operations work, what the challenges and risks are that are involved with those objectives and strategies. How have you been doing on executing and performing those, those missions, those services? What are the major trends? What are the major transaction cycles, whether it's, you know, something as simple as cash receipts, dispersments, all things that support your day-to-day missions and objectives? And then, what are the internal controls that you have over those cycles? Because we are going to rely on those and test those, evaluate those, to see how you perform your day-to-day. So, that's an important part of the audit process. From that, we're going to develop an audit plan that's customized, that's specific for the city. We are going to use a materiality threshold. So, remember, the main objective with what you're going to have us doing is to audit your financial statements, to detect whether there are any material errors or omissions that would cause a user of the financial statements to be misguided. Okay? So, that's the primary gist of what we want to do in performing the process. So, we're gonna use that materiality threshold. Every accounting system has errors in it, okay? So, no matter what entity you are, there's always going to be errors that occur, simply because there's such a high volume of transactions and certain complexities within any given transaction. So, what we want to make sure does not happen is that any of those errors are significant enough to where those financial statements would be misstated. And then, within that, we're gonna want to make sure we know who the primary users of the financial statements are. Y'all, obviously, as the governing board are one, also your bondholders, granting agencies, certainly the state of North Carolina. I mentioned the, next slide, I mentioned the concept of materiality. So, we're gonna use that materiality concept both when we plan the audit and when we come in and perform our field work. We're gonna use it to evaluate if we, when we do detect that there might be an occasional insignificant error, is it insignificant based on the materiality threshold that we've set? Materiality is going to be, it's quantitative, but it's also qualitative. The best example would be if you have bond covenants that, let's say, you have to meet a certain earnings requirement. If there's an error that otherwise would be considered immaterial, but it's the difference as to whether or not it pushes you over to where you meet your requirements, we're going to treat that, even though it might be a relatively small amount, if it's the difference between making a covenant compliance requirement and not, that's going to be important to us than if it were, you know, within another context within your financial statements. So, we're going to use concept of materiality for our risk assessment to help us determine what we're going to test, to what extent we're going to test it, and the types of audit tests that we perform. And that materiality level is going to be subjective. It's not going to be the same across the board. It's going to depend on what circumstance or what area of your financial system that we're looking at. Next slide. I mentioned internal controls. Internal controls are the ones that we're going to be most concerned about, are the actions and events, the processes and procedures that occur throughout the year within your financial reporting system and within your accounting system. So, it may be anything as simple as making sure that procurement is followed for proper documentation and authorization for expenditures, certainly looking to make sure that reconciliations from anything from a bank account to an AR customer subsidiary ledger, that those things are being done consistently and correctly. So, the financial statement audit, it's really not just about as of June 30. It's really about all the things that y'all as the city and your finance department are doing throughout the year. That's really what we want to get our arms around and make sure we understand. So, while we're not expressing an opinion on your internal controls, they certainly are an important part of the audit process that we want to make sure we understand. The city, as y'all know, is subjected to a number of compliance requirements, whether it's from your federal granting sources, certainly the state. You fall under government auditing standards. A lot of compliance factors fall into that. We want to make sure that we're comfortable with your ability to comply with these requirements because they could be material to the financial statement audit. So, definitely an area in terms of compliance that we're, we stress within the process. Next slide. Just to give you an idea of the timing of the audit, we'll really get things kicked off on March 22nd, when we come in to meet with your finance director and staff, and let them know what our preliminary audit plan is, kind of bounce that off of them and tweak that plan. And then, starting in the April-May timeframe, we'll come in and do some what we call interim testing. A lot of that is going to revolve around gaining that understanding of your systems and your internal controls, and that way, we can develop effective audit tests to test your major transaction cycles. In August, after your finance department has closed out the books, then we'll come in, and with that understanding of your systems that we developed back in April and May, we'll come in and test those balances. So, all the activity and balances and footnote disclosure that you see in your comprehensive annual financial report, that's where we really attack those and start looking at the validity, the accuracy of those within that materiality limit that we talked about. Finally, in October, once the, your team has drafted the comprehensive annual financial report, we're going to do a thorough review of that. We're going to tie it back to all our tests and audit work that we performed, and keep that on schedule so that you have a timely submission for the local government commission. And that, in a nutshell, is the schedule that we currently have laid out. And that, in very broad strokes, next slide, is how we foresee the audit process, and I can certainly take any questions y'all might have on that.
Any members of the council have questions for Tom? Sounds like a pretty good plan. Our finance department seems ready to go and acceptable with that schedule.
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion to award a contract, please.
I move we award an audit contract with Elliot Davis DeCosimo for three years at the cost of year one, $36,500, year two, $37,000, year three, $37,500.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimous. Tom, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Next on your agenda, we're going to postpone this item. It's the agreement with Burke Arts Council regarding Etta Baker. It will come up in the April session. So, we will move on to the next item for consideration, which is renaming Mountain View Street. Sally?
Yes, and this item, we talked about briefly several months ago, and there has been lots of discussions since then and a meeting with the residents on that street. You'll recall that the complication is that there's also a street named Mountain View Street in Drexel. And so, with GPS and all kinds of things, that causes a problem. So, the residents have agreed, and we are asking you to consider tonight to change the name to Steeple Heights Lane, agreed upon by all the residents on the street. There is not another one of those in Burke County, so that should eliminate the mail and package problem and all of that. We would put this street, and as usual, we'll correct our Powell Bill report so that this continues to be counted on that report, if you choose to change the name.
And may I add, Mr. Mayor, also, that the names not only agreed to by the residents of that street, they came up with that name as a suggestion, and there you have it.
I'll entertain a motion before discussion. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the renaming of Mountain View Street to Steeple Heights Lane.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you have any discussion? I know, Sally, one of the problems was the 911 system. Is that correct?
It is, and that was a real problem, and then also deliveries, mail, you name it, issues.
And again, if I may add, this is not hypothetical. The residents on that street have had 911 emergency calls where the response was made to the street in Drexel. They've also had mail delivered to Drexel. They've had UPS deliveries to Drexel, and I have to assume it's been the other way around at times, too, probably.
Counsel, any further discussion?
It's between two steeples.
That's why they came up with it, yes.
Okay, we have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimous. Next on your agenda is a consideration of a grant with the North Carolina State Historic Preservation Office. Sally?
Historic Burke Foundation has an opportunity to receive a grant from the State Historic Preservation Group, and this is to assist with a new roof that is much needed at the McDowell House at Quaker Meadows. The process requires that a certified local government serve as the pass-through agent for this, and we do qualify as that. You'll recall that we have done this before with Western Piedmont Community College several times. The last one we did was the Silo Barn Project. I don't remember another one since then. We will basically pass the money through. Historic Burke will be in charge of the bidding and all of those kinds of things. We're just basically the accounting function for that. The grant will be $10,000 or less, somewhere in that amount, and would ask that you allow us to act in this manner so we can help them get that money.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve acting as the certified local government agency for the grant from the North Carolina State Historic Preservation Office for the roof project at the McDowell House at Quaker Meadows.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous.
Give us something else for the auditors to look at.
Yes. Next is consideration of appointments to boards and commissions. Sally?
Tonight, you have, our Historic Preservation Commission has two vacancies. Had one last month, and since then, we've had a resignation. We have two vacancies tonight, and you have received applications from folks who are interested in doing that, and those were included in your packet. Have an application from David Stevenson and from Tyler Sane.
Let's see, wishes of the council.
It's your appointment.
I think it's mayoral.
Well, then, I will point David A. Stevenson and Tyler Franklin Sane to the Historic Preservation Commission to fulfill terms to expire on November 8th, 2017. That was an easy one. Any further action to come before city council?
I have one announcement that, late-breaking news.
Okay.
Late notice today that there will also be a controlled burn at Lake James tomorrow in addition to the burn at Grandfather Mountain. If you have any questions, ask Amanda. She knows.
Thank you, Amanda, for bringing that to us. The woods will be on fire, but it will be on purpose. Any further discussion? We stand adjourned.